Believe in some people. That the face of America and to the Republic with its chance. Foundation. Thank you. Welcome to the work session this morning. Going to get these book, uh.
Yep. It's picking up.
Hey, I'm going to talk loud. That's what we're going to do. Uh, good morning. Thank you, uh, for joining us, uh, this morning. These new people in the audience. No call please.
Supervisor Hill.
Here.
Trusty Crooker.
Here.
I'm sorry, Treasurer Crooker. Trusty Happing.
Here.
Trusty Newton.
Here.
And Clerk Slyer, Josez.
Thank you. Okay, um, before we start on the, uh, the, uh, the agenda. First off, make a note down there, obviously, uh. There's an error on the very bottom, the meeting was a long term supervisor, I am. And, uh, we can make that correct right now. Uh, um, so, yeah, does anybody have any comments, uh, on any of the agenda items this, this morning? Or would you wait and would like to wait until we address it? You know, accept comments at the time of the, of the, uh, the predicted item.
This is a, this is a question as a, you know, here to. Uh, there's some input with the, uh, with the glow at large, uh, oh, okay.
Can you come on up and give everybody your name, Dr. Nathan, I know you, but.
Really make that, uh, the comments at this time. I just wanted to say from the logistics. Um, is that, uh, 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 we've been waiting for public comments at the end of the meeting? Or they have an opportunity to have some, uh, uh, make some comments before you. Uh, to talk about the particular subject item on the, uh, which is the at-large.
The, the work sessions, uh, are always, uh.
Okay, that's fine, and I'll just.
And, uh, and I always give, uh, people the opportunity on this particular item.
Fine, and I'll just, I'll just wait till they cooperate tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, you're right. Anybody else? Okay, uh, who read loud, uh, our building is only, uh, update.
One, everybody.
What?
Uh, October twenty twenty four building report. Uh, we issued thirteen building permits. Four like permits. Nine mechanical permits. Four plumbing permits. Uh, we did three residential inspections, rentals. And, uh, three land use permits. And that's all totaled, uh, six thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. Uh, let's see what else. Uh, planning commission meeting this month. Uh, we were going to have a site plan for a cell tower. It doesn't look like they're going to be ready in time for that, so I pushed off to the next meeting. Any questions? Can I get it slow right now? I try slow down.
That's what I do. There we are, we found there.
Do we, we here now? I'm just going to ask because we're, obviously, we're slowing down, trend's slowing down, uh, that kind of thing, you know, just to be expected and normal. Yep, this, usually by year season. And then you just kind of steady through the winter and it's, we're hitting that down during right now. Very good. Yep.
Mary Jo, the specific question for the board member. Eric? Yeah, uh, on those, uh, rental inspections, those are long-term or short-term?
Long-term.
Okay, okay.
Three inspections, this is, this is our third year of having the ordinance.
Okay.
And the inspections happen every three years, so we're kind of going through the old, the first ones and.
Kind of like a safety tank, you're running.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right, as those become discovered, obviously, as well.
Right.
And, and those get, uh, we get inspected and then now you're on the, the three year.
Yep, we're no inspection.
There. Nothing? Anybody in the audience at all, any comments or asks of the. Building, uh, building, uh, Jason does a wonderful job. For, for us, we're very fortunate to have him. I know you can probably pick other controversies and other hardships or whatever. We're just fortunate to have him, so thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
And again, you don't have to stay with him. Thank you, appreciate that. Number two on the agenda is the police department.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'm quite a lengthy report, but I'm just going to highlight, uh, some of the major areas. It's all important, but. Some of the more important things. Uh, we're continuing to work on the accreditation process. Uh, we met and went, went over the, uh. Seven policies that we currently have that need to, some revisions and then, uh, additional eleven policies that we need to add to, uh. Come in compliance with that, uh, chapter one standard. Um, so that's, uh, moving along, uh, very well. Uh, quick update on patrol car that we received. Uh, it's been decal by a new century sign and, uh, the equipment has been ordered. Uh, through program out of, uh, Mount Pleasant. Um, as I said last month, it's a six-week wait on the equipment, so I'm hoping looking end of November, maybe beginning of December to have that car fully equipped. Um, and, uh. In.
In the fleet.
Yep. Uh. Update on car number four that was involved in the, uh, accident. Um. We received it back on Monday. The exclusion completed the bodywork on it and then, uh, West Conwell Recyclers did the suspension work on it. Uh, reason it took a little bit longer, uh, when they got into the suspension work, after they removed one part, they realized towards a bracket broke on. The cradle carriage, which is the main component that holds the rear suspension together on both sides of the vehicle. So they had to track one down and, and get that put on there, but it is, uh, back in service. Uh, update on Officer Cole. He had his, uh, follow-up appointment with a neurologist last Friday and has been cleared for duty. Um, and his first night back was a, uh, this Monday. So he's back on the schedule and couldn't go with no restrictions and back working and, and he's glad to be back. And we're, and we're glad, glad to have him back. Uh. Follow-up on Officer Stururski. He had his, uh, scheduled surgery on November fourth, which was on Monday. Uh, with a two to three week, uh, rec- recovery period for that first surgery that he has to have, uh, he'll have to have a Cosby bag. Um, during that timeframe. Um, it's two to three week recovery period and then you'll have to have it for another. Month after that or so, um, which said, he said that he could come back restricted duty. Um. We did talk to the insurance carrier, uh, this week, who said that would be fine. But wouldn't recommend anything over thirty hours. Um, that way we can still keep the short-term disability active. Um, so looking at probably bringing him back, we have some court status size and stuff that he can continue to do like he was doing before he was, uh, went off. Um, so we'll get him back for roughly thirty hours a week, um, until he has to go back for his, uh. Reversal surgery, which will then be a two to three week recovery period. And then he's hoping to be back. Um, full duty, no restriction or anything, um, prior end of January, beginning of February. And again, he's excited to return and, uh, we're excited to have him back. Um. Also, this month, I was contacted by Jo Jean Thompson from Up North Prevention. And, uh, she was inquiring if the police department or the township hall would be interested in. A distribution box for naloxone. Um, and the only requirement for that is to have somebody that would be designated to monitor the box if it got low to refill it or, or make arrangements with her to get it refilled. Um, I guess I'm asking the board if that's something that the township would be interested in doing here at the township building.
What is this for?
The oxone is the, um.
Arcan.
Uh, it's an arcan for reversal of narcotics. Um, so if somebody has an overdose, you would hit them with the naloxone and it's supposed to reverse the effects of the drug.
Do you think we should do it? Your recommendation, we should.
Uh, go, go forth with it? That's up to you. I, I had, uh, told her that I wouldn't be interested for one over at the police department.
Okay.
Um. So that's why I was bringing it to you guys to see if you guys would be interested in it.
It saves lives.
Yeah, and naloxone's available in multiple places now. Um, not like when, when it first came up, you couldn't get it or anything. I mean, I, you might even go to get it at the store now.
My only comment, uh, on it would be obviously, I, I think if we were to agree to have it in the hall. Um, I, we have a fire EMS right next door. I can't imagine. But it can happen or they're out or otherwise, but if we're going to do it, then the, the board and the employees here should know how to. Assist with the, the, uh, the rescue of that product. It's not merely just having it free and available to somebody. But with it comes an expectation, obviously. Now, there are, the laws do cover Vitsamart and the laws do cover those things. Um, in the event you were to assist, uh, in that process. Um, or opioid, but. I, I just think to put it in here and not to, and to say, oh, well, there it is, um, that you're going to have some type of governmental expectation. That certainly somebody in the hallway know how to use it, so.
From my understanding.
Think about that, um, and, and we can.
It, it's an indoor-outdoor box, so if you chose to mount it outside the door, you know, people could come up as a mission and get it too.
Yeah, the intent is, is if you live with someone who has a, a, a potential issue for opioid overdoses, whether it's by prescription or by abuse. That indeed this is available, made available and for me, uh, to the public. Um. But no one can negate the fact that. So somebody may need it or in use, uh, and I don't know, I, I, to make an assumption, our fire EMS will always be there, probably ninety percent of the time they may. But I think that if we're going to do this, you don't do it. Um, I gotta watch my language, but you don't do it that way. You know, but if we're going to do it as a board and, and our employees, we need to make sure the employees in the building know how to get it, know how to apply it when it's necessary. Um, it literally is, uh, uh, it's an opioid antagonist and having. A, a instructor in it, if you will, um, uh, if you give it to them and it just blocks the neuron, if you will, uh, that continues that opioid process for them or the overdose. So literally, if you gave it to somebody that didn't need it, you're not going to hurt them. Um, but there is. A process, so. Board, think about that. Um, thanks for bringing it up and.
Yeah, if you could just let me on out, we reach back out to Jo Jean on your decision.
Sure, and I think, well, we, we can visit that, uh, for an action item. Um. Depends on how you all feel, whether it's wait till December or, or what you want to do. Jason, you have access to this now, the fire department?
Uh, we do, but.
Okay.
Carry it inside our drug boxes, so. For if we.
So there is some in the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, multiple.
Yeah, and that's kind of.
This is, this is the proactive piece where they come and get some if they want to.
Right, and, and we have available at the police department also, we carry it in patrol cars and officers carry it with them. Um.
So, is that, is that fair, board, uh, one hundred percent? What about? We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it, uh, and then we will, uh, come back, uh, to it if. We want to make those arrangements, so we should have heard that in public if we intend to do it.
I'm good, thank you. Uh, just a follow-up on the, uh, noise complaint that myself and Supervisor Hill had talked to on Sheridan Drive. That a report was submitted to the township attorney and, uh, charges were issued on both homeowners. And, uh, some will be mailed to them to appear in court for that, and then also, uh, attorney has started the, the civil process on that being how, uh. Uh, how bad, uh. The violation was, you know, he thought that we should go to the sub road on there also, so we're, uh, awaiting hearing on that, but just wanted to give you update on that. Um, since, uh, Sergeant Wybranich returned in December, uh, we've been looking for a replacement for him. Uh, so far, we've only received one application and, uh, we continue to look for someone and have posted a job opening on our website, social media. And at Curly Community College, uh, I plan on, uh, reaching out to. Uh, Isabella County, it looks like their, uh, millage interpasse and they're laying off, uh, nineteen to twenty deputies. Um, so there's probably some able and willing bodies there that we may be able to pull one from, hopefully. Uh, obviously, they would have to move north. Um, I'm also currently working on a. Uh, short little flyer type, uh. brochure. Uh, idea of letting people know that we were, are willing and able to sponsor somebody through the academy. Uh, you know, that, for that person out there that's maybe been interested in law enforcement or a career in. As a police officer and never was sure of the route to go or how to get there. Um, so I am currently working on that also and, you know, everybody can also spread the word that we're looking for somebody.
Have you approached the high school yet? Is that too young?
No, I have seniors in high school. O- Officer Ellis is, um. You know, the SRO, and I had mentioned it to him to keep his eyes out and then talk to the students if somebody's interested. Um, it's, it's not too young and it's a route that we could go with somebody. But we obviously want to be, have somebody that's committed and, you know, willing to do it. Uh, quick update on the landscaping over at the PD, uh, Higgins Lake Landscaping has finished, uh. Our landscape refresh project and I think it looks great. If they get a chance, come on by and take a look at it. Uh, I'd like to thank them and Blake and his crew. They, they did a great job. Uh, quick update on the changing of the lake level complaint we managed in January of twenty twenty-three. Um. We were advised last week that all charges have been dismissed. Um, once we return the property to the defendant. Um, the case will be closed on our end. Uh, myself and Sergeant Wybranick volunteered at the RHS Homecoming Football Game, uh, working the concession stand, something we've been doing the last few years. Uh, for the, uh, homecoming, uh, game. That way the students can participate in the events and things and enjoy their homecoming. That way they don't have to work the concession stand, so we, uh, helped out with that. Along with, uh, other agencies. And then, uh, myself and Sergeant Wybranick also attended the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center ten-year celebration that was held at the barn in, uh, West Ranch. Uh, to represent here at township and, uh, celebrate with everybody, and it was a really nice event. And then just some upcoming events that we have. Uh, when we had the, the annual sixteenth annual trunk or treat that was held here at the township, uh, went very well. Uh, we estimate probably over a thousand people and we had thirty-six trunks participating. Uh, like to thank everybody that came out, volunteered and participated, and then, uh, we gave away fifteen random prize drawings and. A prize for the best decorated trunk, scariest trunk and the most creative trunk. Um, we've closed the scrap metal project for this year for the twenty twenty-four season. Uh, we brought in three thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, pretty good year that we had. I know the last. Two loads that we took brought in almost a thousand dollars and that's due to the fact that we separate the, um, aluminum and. Uh, those type of metals from the regular steel, because aluminum's worth a little bit more money, so that's why that load was, uh, so much more. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Carlos Jean Francois, uh, Trustee Newton and, uh, Pat Roz for helping out with that scrap metal project. Without those guys, it wouldn't have happened. And then, uh. One last thing, I have been in contact with Messiah Lutheran Church and, uh, we plan on delivering the fifteen, twenty Thanksgiving dinners boxes for those in need. Um, Officer Ellis is on our list of people that, uh, might need that assistance, so we'll be doing that again this year. That's, that's about it. Any questions?
Mary Jo?
Nope, none, thank you.
Eric? Larry? I, I don't have anything else. Good job.
All right, thank you.
Good job, and we wish you luck, fill in the positions and, uh. Hopefully, maybe we can get some qualified candidates in, that's, that's mystery three, we're in edging this. This hollow region of Darwin State. Uh, it's the, uh, Chief, Chief Fisher. And over there applies to your department as well.
Good morning. Uh, just get some of the highlights of the report that you have in front of you. Um, a little bit, uh, sign and calls this year compared to last year, we're at, uh, forty-five and last year at this time, we're at, uh, five oh nine, so that's a good thing, right?
Yeah.
That's less, uh, less emergency calls. Uh, still keeping us busy. October seems to be a busy month for us, even if we don't have a, a lot of calls. Um, training wise, if you look through there, uh, one of the ones I want to highlight there. Is the equipment maintenance for full-time staff. Our, our trucks, everything that rolls on the road has to be inspected for DOT compliance. And we've, we've been pretty good historically of maintaining our equipment, but with our full-time staff, we wanted to give them an opportunity to learn more. About maintaining the equipment, so we have the mechanic that does our DOT inspections, a diesel mechanic come in and. Spend a couple hours with our staff and go through the trucks and can learn about things. That they should be checking more often, that they can maybe repair and all those kinds of things, so I think it was a really good. Opportunity for our full-time staff to be more familiar with equipment maintenance, um, so that was a, that was a good, good opportunity there. Uh, personnel provided CPR, several CPR classes this year. Um, this is this month, uh, for the CTE public safety students, they receive their CPR certifications and the RAPS bus drivers as well. Um, Julie helps with some of those and coordinates some of those, but our, our CPR instructors are there as well. Um, and we had, um, the core CTE classes, we had eight of those, uh, this past month. And then on the back, uh, as I said, October's pretty busy. October is fire prevention month and usually the second week of October is fire prevention week. So we provided fire prevention education for the kids at the, uh, Emmanuel Baptist School. The Core and Rock School and all of the, uh, students at the elementary school and, and the preschool here at the RES. So it was a busy, busy couple weeks, um, visiting with the kids was a lot of fun. Uh, we used our safety education trailer that was, you know, developed a couple of years ago, has the graphics on it now, and that worked really, really well. Um, a couple of other departments did borrow the trailer as well for some activities in their area. You know. And as, uh, uh, Chief, uh. Chief Eric said, over there, he said, uh, about the trunk or treat, we helped with that as well. We have pretty busy there. Uh, it was a great night. The weather actually was perfect after the rain stopped, so it was really, really nice. Um, meetings, uh, and meetings, uh, I chair the nine one one authority board and, um, a number of the folks have renewed their memberships there, but, um, Mary Jo, I've got a. Got an assignment for you if you can help me out. You're on the RTA, right?
Yes.
Um, we need to find another member from the RTA for the nine one one authority board. So if you can bring that to the, to the board that you carried.
And get myself replaced there as secretary. I'll announce it.
It doesn't have to be somebody from the RTA board, um, it can be somebody from the fire department, police department, um, somebody from the township boards.
Okay.
It'll have to be somebody specifically from the RTA, but it has to be recommended by the RTA.
Okay, okay. My, my sticky brain on how to put that in, um, reminder email.
Okay, we talked about that, that'd be great. Um, a few, uh, classes this last month, reading smoke and incident safety officer that were sponsored by the state that, uh, slipped the chief Rogers as the county training coordinator, schedules those and, um. Carries those out, he brings in instructors for those kinds of courses, so I did those. And Assistant Chief Rogers is also coordinating the upcoming countywide firefighter one and two class for new, uh, new firefighters, that's going to be held here. On November eleventh through May of next year. Uh, every Monday and Wednesday night and some Saturdays, uh, that class will be going on. Many of the instructors come from our department, but there's instructors from around the county as well. And we, um. We share that with Crawford County every, every other year. We do one and they do one. Um, this year, they're actually doing one at the same time, so we won't have very many folks from Crawford County, but, um, I think we've got a pretty full class, unlike we got close to one student, um, signing up, so. We have. We have one from our department that will be in that class. Um, significant events, uh, sad note, um, as y'all know, we lost, um, Wesley Eldred, one of our firefighters, uh, this month. Uh, to a farming accident here in the township. He was introduced here at the township board in September, um, as a new member to our department. Um, but he had twenty-five years of fire experience from previous departments. So our department assisted the family with the funeral services, uh, Assistant Chief Rogers, um, was the officiant, uh, there. And we did an honor guard and a procession and all that. Many of our members were affected by that call, uh, because it occurred here in the township and they, they worked hard to try to save Wesley. Um, so we set up a peer support team meeting and did a diffusing to work through that process with our members, so. Right now, everybody seems to be doing pretty well. But we'll be keeping an eye on each other and make sure that, that we're all doing well and we're continuing to help the family where needed on our farm here. So, um. Things coming up in the future, stuff the ambulance, um, will be held December fourteenth. We're collecting supplies, um, for floods and more, which is serving county kids ages, um, up to eighteen. And flyers are available here at the township hall and at the fire department as well. Well done.
Thank you, Chief. Question, Mary Jo?
Oh, thank you.
Eric, I'm good. Larry? Jim, thank you, uh, I appreciate all your work and I know that was really hard and time, um, and, uh. I'm thankful that we have a peer support, uh, available to. Having worked on many, many people over my years as well, we had no peer support, uh, and I can just tell you that, that it's good to. Good to get emotions out and, uh, it's very, those are very hard jobs. And, uh, sometimes I think we in the public and everybody always just kind of take it for granted. And the old, well, you applied for that job, uh, type of, uh, application, but we, we're here and we have emotions. Thank you and, uh, you know, uh, listening to the department and to the family, you know, thank you. Also like to make a quick note, you know, you heard a couple of names being mentioned, that, that you will and manuals and things like that. Nothing mentioned here is without the permission of the individuals, uh, that are going through their health problems or things that have occurred. So, uh, we're not, we're not talking out of school, we're just trying to, we're family here and we're trying to keep everybody informed. And we love them all like they're, uh, kids, uh, some, I mean, I certainly be kids, our kids, like, just so you know, uh. It, it was asked to be at one time, uh, concerning a hip or something there, but, um. The chiefs are very good about making sure those things are, bases are covered, and if they don't want their name mentioned, it won't be mentioned enough, so. Okay, I see Jim Barwell, you, uh, slipped in, just in time for, uh, more updates. We received, obviously, your, uh, written, uh, report, but, uh, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you all for your support over the years. Uh, we are continuing to work, basically, I know, we talked about the last few times, we've done three grants totally well over a million dollars. And we're trying to put that to work best we can, um. You know, we have, for the million dollar grant, we have to send out a request for qualifications for engineering firms. We asked for firms to re- respond regarding the, uh, their qualifications to tackle a project of this size and nature. They asked for, you know, some of their references and, you know, things like that. Those, uh, requests are due on Monday, the eleventh. And then we'll go through a period of just looking to them, probably interview a couple of them. And make a decision as we go forward. We want a firm that's capable of a-doing projects, familiar with the area. And has done similar things and it can give us, you know, management throughout the project, um. As you know, volunteers, this is not our area of expertise necessarily, so we'll be relying on whatever firm we end up selecting to do. You know, give us guidance and, uh, support in going forward. Uh, the, the million dollar grant, of course, I think. Top briefings, so a lot of it is basic information. Over the last two or three years, we had a lot of questions, what are the answers, what are the answers? Well, a lot of those answers to me, you know, were, or the, the original preliminary report was. Well, a lot of those answers may, you know, or the, the original preliminary report was done based on limited information. We had limited geographic mapping, we had limited information regarding soils and things like that. So hopefully the million dollars will forward us on and and I mentioned in a couple of meetings, as we go forward and get more information, we fine tune the preliminary engineering report and move forward. I also include just, you know, we're, what our purpose was and that's what we continue to pursue. The purpose of our organization is to improve to acquire own improvement large extended operators who dispose the system. That's both in the Articles of Incorporation and, and in the Act two thirty-three. That's what we're tasked to do. That's the task that we are, you know, performing as we move forward. We also, you know, will answer as we go forward and I know you, the township is responsible for a lot of the funding and as far as public act one eighty-eight, if there's input that we need to put into that, we'll be happy to do that. Any other questions? Appreciate it.
I don't, you'll see me further down. I don't know what you plan on staying or not. So I'll ask you the question now on number nine. And you have alluded to it that Dave Hall has tendered his resignation as of the end of his term, if not sooner. The terms of the current board members will be expired in within the next five months. Article seven of the Articles of Incorporation addressing the board and officers are attached in the township board's appointed members. So do you want to discuss that right now or wait and, or would you like to?
Prefer to just discuss that out with the community and that.
When it comes up or?
No, right now.
Right now? Okay, very good.
Throw that.
All right, so. Mary Jo, you don't have any question? About this, about?
I don't know, but I, you can I come back?
Eric? Larry? Okay. For me, I, I I kind of have to frame this, I guess, toward the audience as to how things have landed on my desk in the complete transparency. There's been discussion for a couple of months now that Dave Hall, who is he, who was, yes, I'm not sure what the status is at this point, but the at-large member, he's just the.
Currently, I have the at-large, I'll just clarify, and he's talked about resigning for some personal reasons for a number of months. He was going to go through the end of his term, but if the occasion arises that he can be earlier, he would.
Well, how that arrived with me was an initial letter, which was in a letter of correspondence last month, which was a letter, what I call a letter of intent that told the board that he would not be seeking any reelection for the seat again as March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, which is when his seat was due to be expired in another book. Seeing that in no days and having no communication with Dave, I certainly didn't want to bring it to our board. I'm not into detroning anybody from positions. He's been a passionate member of that board. So we put it in correspondence. Since then now, about mid, mid October-ish, if you will, I got a, a note which was, what I call another clarification that he would indeed, didn't plan to serve the term out. But on October twenty-third, the email said, or when a replacement can be appointed, I will resign from the Garris Lion Utility Authority. And it's due to personal reasons, which are, which is fine. A couple of days later, I don't know the exact date, but I walked into the office and I learned that Lion Township had decided that they were having a special meeting, an eighteen-hour special meeting to address that issue. And of course, those, that position is supposed to be agreed upon by the two boards, if you will. I am not aware, and I'll ask each board member publicly. Were you ever consulted from any member of the, shall I say, current Lion Board, as we know with the election that it it feels like there's a holders late of folks coming in, if I'm not wrong. So I'm going to ask you outright, were you ever contacted by Lion Board to discuss what now is a subsequent nomination of James Kaufman to replace Dave Hall's spot? Were you contacted, Mary Jo, individually and talked to any current Lion Township board member?
I wasn't contacted, but I did have a conversation with Eric Carlson the last, I think it was a little meeting, a special one, just to get his take on things. But I wasn't, I approached him.
Okay, do you want to share what was said? Because I, nobody has approached me, so.
Okay, no, he, he just pretty much reverberated what, you know, they made his, you know, put his resignation for that position and he gave, gave good recommendations for this, for James Kaufman and it was, it was pretty much it, yeah. And he wasn't sure what the board was going to do over there and I get that.
Eric? No, no, I was saying Larry. Okay, nothing, nothing with me either. And this was my first crack at, in these appointments to this particular board. So Jim, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, because I don't know what, I know you recommend that's part of the Articles of Incorporation.
The Articles of Incorporation, our board recommends to both townships and in the process of reading this recommendation, the question is, we, you know, we knew about, I did, a couple of people. And I talked to a number of people that have been supportive of the sewers as they give you the information. Our purpose is to, you know, to move forward with this project. And so I talked to a number of people that have historically been involved, who may be interested. I talked to them and Jim Kaufman's name was recommended a number of times by different, you know, individuals and whatever.
And was, recently, I mean, did, did you guys like advertise? Did you?
No, we did not advertise.
Okay, did you, at your meeting, I'm presuming at your meeting, were there other people considered or was this just?
It was my recommendation to our board.
Your recommendation?
I talked to a number of the people and they talked, and I talked to, and I think that some of the board members had talked to different people. And I talked to Eric because I know his term ends in November because of the election. He was interested in a couple of others. And so based on, you know, the qualifications of Jim Kaufman, and I know his support has been unwavering throughout the years. That he was a good, solid individual, spent some CPA back on business. And as I say, our organization is, needs to become a business oriented group, stronger than that. So I really, the board they recommended this to both Lion Township, for the Articles of Incorporation and the B I.
Okay, for the audience's clarification, I, we, the board did receive, and I, I, it was September eighth, according to the year letter to us, September eighth. I didn't get this until October, obviously. I don't know whether you made a clarification up there on your letter about Jim or about the recommendation of Jimmy Kaufman? That's why I wanted to back the process.
Yeah, I followed up and asked, you know, if we could get some, you know, sort of written.
And, and I just, so that everybody knows, Jim has been, you know, transparent as far as trying to bring us the recommendation. I'm not alluding to any of that at all. So I, I do think that the James, Jim Kaufman, and I'm going to quickly read this. Dear Blue Board, it was dated October fourth, and my name is Jim Kaufman and I'm writing to express interest in the director at-large position on the Blue Board. I have had the privilege of enjoying Higgins Lake for as long as I can remember. In nineteen sixty-six, my parents bought property on Magnolia Avenue in Garrish Township and proceeded to build the family cottage in this world in the family owned by my brother and my sister, who owns the cottage next door. In two thousand thirteen, my wife and I bought her place on West Higgins Lake Drive in Lion Township. Over the years, I've witnessed firsthand changes in the lake, weed growth and shallow waters, far more algae-covered rocks and algae groups and lake bottom not quite as firm as it once was. All these changes, I believe, are connected primarily to population growth and ineffective septic systems, underscoring the need for a municipal sewer system. When faced with a situation outside my expertise, I look to experts to inform my decision-making. I'm analytical by nature and my actions are directed by logic and fact. While there are no opinions around the need for a sewer, I prefer to rely on scientists who have studied the health of the lake and the and the end effectiveness of septic systems. Clear bodies of water and high groundwater tables, protecting the quality of our drinking water should be a priority for our township leaders. My wife of thirty-five years and I reside in Charver City and have three grown daughters. I have made my career in the insurance industry and financial information worldwide and presently head the insurance headquartered in Charver City. I am a CPA and hold multiple insurance designations, financing arrangements and cost projections are not foreign to me, and these skills will be valuable managing a multi-million dollar sewer project. Thank you in advance for considering my request. Feel free to reach out to me with questions and many good, respectful Jim Kaufman. So. That is what we got. We received no, no other, obviously, interest in other form whatsoever. This is the person that Loua, Loua is recommending to, to us. The current Lion Board, as I said, wrapped it up and they did approve him for that fifty percent of authority for that seat. So now it becomes our job to, to either confirm, deny, or whatever we choose to do with regards to the recommendation from Blue. We'll vote here and it works out. So I think it's time now that each board member get an opportunity to, to, to say what they feel about the process so far. I was not contacted by anybody from Lion to discuss what process they may have or the wisdom of their appointment, other than they did it in the, this particular board, which becomes a lame duck essentially, board. So Eric, you want to start us off?
Oh, sure. I agree, he's got great qualifications, but I, I guess my feeling is, as you say, a lame duck type of situation for our board, I would just assume postponers till in December. And let the new board take a look and get their, get their thoughts on it.
Larry?
I think the timing would be better in December than it is now, only because during our, we got next week and that's, you know, nothing, I don't see it as a critical issue as far as timing at the moment. So I think that giving the most opportunity for further discussion. And however, as you know, I mean, I see that this gentleman is certainly qualified and I've never met him. My concern is always making sure the community feels there was plenty of opportunity for others who might have shown an interest. Which maybe there isn't, maybe there would be, but I would, I can defer.
Eric?
Yeah, he's highly qualified. It sounds like a good candidate. I think because there's, there's consideration for the new board. I mean, does it matter to wait a month?
No, I'm just broad enough because that's our responsibility to hold an individual and recommend one we did. And like I said, his history and his knowledge of the project, and that's, he has shown by his actions that he's very supportive. What we have to do. And I did bring up that there are a number of other openings that will be coming up in soon the end of March that both Lion Township and Garrish Township will be appointing various members throughout. So, and I, I, because of, you know.
Those are interviewed by recommendation again?
No, they are not a recommendation there. That's what I want. Totally, this is the only one.
Totally.
Lion District, Garrish District, we only recommend on this one individual. And the rest are, and, and so I hope you look at the, you know, what the purpose of our organization is. And I hope you're, you know, doing whatever diligence you want to do before the time that they become, the terms expire. And that's why I mentioned it last month and I can mention it. And then, because we have our, just like you do, your annual meetings and you have your budgeting and all that. It's, it's nice to have that capability. Get somebody at least knowing that he'll be coming into the, into the position to try to do it, caught up to speed.
Just for clarification. You said one thing we talked about, the other six positions. Explain to me again exactly how they're going to be filled in the future. Given your own committee recommendation?
No, no. Three members are appointed solely by Lion Township.
Okay.
Three members are solely, you know, appointed by the Garrish Township.
Is that so?
And the one at-large individual whom we talked, and that today is based, is the Blue Board recommends an individual, in this case Jim Kaufman, but that has to be approved by both Lion Township and Garrish Township.
I understand that. So in the future, for all the positions, where do these names come from? General at public large, does the committee have a recommendation they plan on giving to the board? What's the plan? I mean, like, like the Garrish Township, three positions got to be filled. Where are the names going to come from?
Well, they're supposed to be standard, but.
Okay, but are they, are we going to advertise for them? Are we going to just have Loua make recommendations or is that?
There's no indication, there's no indication in the Articles of Incorporation how they, how you will select, you know, we'd be happy to select, suggest individuals.
Well, being relatively new, I would just.
This will be the first round that we have ever gone through, either Blue, or the board.
Because I just personally think that making as open opportunity as possible is always the best way to.
Again, in full transparency, we do, we do have a get get through email, but individual which to be which to be considered, I did forward that on to Jim or to the, the Blue in an email. That lies within that committee, this particular at-large piece. That's not something that, that, you know, obviously that position clearly is recommended by the, in the articles. And so but just for the record, I want to make sure and then, and I guess that's identifying that they want me to identify. Okay, for, for that, and with this prevent, Ethan Brand emailed me. Sent me a phone call and he indicated that, that he wanted, of course. And I think every, what's happened here is, is, is there was a, I call it an end of the hour appointment by Lion. They had them there particular board, which, which then I'm sure everybody became aware at that point. And so then obviously we know there are three scientists that are very passionate. And so that, then we get other people that say, hey, I'm willing. And I think that's why Larry asked questions about certainly the future positions, but being, being very open, transparent and without knowing what at least two members that we're going to have in a changeover, the board knows. My, part of my reticence today, it'll not over reticence, but it just kind of goes against what I've always said. God be legal, ethical and moral. And, and I think for, you've heard me, some of you that do come, heard me in two previous meetings indicate I'm not into lame duck. I'm not into lame duck politics. And, uh, we simply have a board and do something now that simply will create, if it's a creation of a controversy just waiting to happen, the next board and other people have different opinions. And so for that reason, I'm not, certainly not prepared this month myself to make that other half recommendation. Doesn't mean I wouldn't appoint James Coffin. It does look on paper to be probably as qualified as anyone else is, uh, when it comes to that. That's why I asked about what, what procedure or what, what the, the board been vetted, Jim. Uh, how did you come up with that decision? Were there phone letters and, and, or was this a, um, hey, I know a guy, uh, who might, and then he has, you know, CPA and whatever, that probably could be useful in the future. Uh, you know, on anything that would happen, um, with the board. Um, and, uh, so hearing you today, apparently there wasn't any of that take more of it with letters and, is that correct?
No, except, except, I talked to a number of things and brought a patient to a number of people.
Okay.
Uh, very good. Uh, as I, um, do, um, thank you, but as I promised.
Yep.
As I promised, um, with any of these items on the agenda, this is the, this is what I call the talk session and the usually late meeting is usually the action session. So, um, is there anybody in the audience that wish, wishes to make a comment about this topic? Um, I'll go with Mr., Mr. Brand. Um, Jim, if you, if you can, if I need your answer, I'll have it just come back down.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Ethan Brand, uh, resident of, uh, Garrish Township. And, uh, probably many of you know, it's equally involved with this, uh, uh, super project since the inception. Um, and you, uh, you already talked about it a lot and, uh, we're going to be, uh, new boards, uh, uh, I just want to address very briefly two items here. One is, is that, uh, what's obviously been reiterated here was that four reasons, which, uh, we just, we, I have no idea. Lula had three eighteen-hour notice sessions since August. One of which had to do with this at-large position. I cannot possibly fathom why they had a special eighteen-hour session. No one that I know of was aware that they were actively soliciting a replacement for Dave Hall. We all knew that the rumor mill was that he was, uh, willing to, wanting to, uh, uh, resign. But there was never any notification of public um, uh, uh, that, hey, you know, we've got an open-at-large, uh, if you're interested, uh, send us something in, come in and talk to us. None of that happened. None of it. That's the deeply concerning issue here. As, as, uh, as Farmerwell noted, the purpose of, of, uh, Lula is not as a proponent of the sewer. It's directed to implement and, uh, if possible, build one. The qualifications for a Lula member is not whether or not they want the sewer or not, it's whether or not they're qualified to be involved with a multimillion dollar project. As I noted and sent out, I'm a retired professional engineer. I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering. I've spent, uh, thirty years in complex engineering projects, both financial, legal, political, all aspects of it. There are very few people that I know of in this thing that have more, uh, uh, actual experience in this. Whether or not I like the sewer is not relevant. When I did my job as an engineer, it's not my job to like what I am doing. It's my job to do the best I can as an engineer. And in this case, as an at-large Lula member, to, uh, follow the, uh, 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 articles of incorporation and, uh, and conduct and be as a, a conducted member of that group to do that. Part of that has to do with, as, uh, Supervisor Hill notes out, is being ethical and moral and legal. A lot of it has to do with, from my point of view as an engineer, you have to be one hundred percent transparent about what you're doing, why you're doing it, who you talk to, what were the metrics that you use to make your decisions. That has been the entire issue with the sewer project is that it's been almost one hundred percent absent. And I, as a, uh, member, whether or not this, uh, uh, project continues or not, if I were to be on that board, my job would be to act as a professional retired engineer in one hand, and my expertise, I've talked with the, uh, engineers at, uh, uh, Lisa Vanderbrink, I, uh, don't know them very well, but they're fellow a professional, retired professional engineer. And the other aspect, though, is transparency. I found it extraordinarily difficult to get answers. That's just, to me, is wrong. All this entire process should have been open and that's why I would ask that, to a certain extent, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to the, uh, to the appointment of any mature, uh, members. Is, is that I would consider my job to make sure that the public is over-informed as to what is going on. And they're under, under, uh, my vote would never, ever to be supporting a special meeting unless it was some extraordinary uh, set of circumstances, that the public would get all of the information that I'm seeing, they get. As soon as it's available to me, it's available to the public and that's a part of it. Anyway, I appreciate that, uh, the sentiment of this board is to wait till the two new boards. We obviously know what's likely to happen over in Lion. Uh, in my point of view, Lula going forward needs to enter a realm of being fully transparent, extraordinarily public about what they're doing. And there should be never any questions as to about what's going on, who talked to who, what pieces of paper they looked at. And always looking for the public, uh, uh, input at any time. Um, anyway, that's, uh, all I've got. If I, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody, since this is a, a novel, I will say, uh, Supervisor Hill, that I have not been to a Garrish meeting formally in many years. This is extraordinary, extraordinary difference from the last time I was here with a certain not-to-be-named supervisor. It's run open, it's professional. It feels like, you know, the public actually, uh, gets an input into all of this. And I'm extraordinarily grateful uh, to Supervisor Hill and the, and the current behavior of the board in that manner. Uh, and I, uh, wish it, uh, wish it to continue. So, uh, again, have any questions? I'm happy to answer. Rachel?
Thank, thank you for acknowledging the new board, or acknowledging having Supervisor Hill there.
Perry?
No, I'm good.
Larry? Uh, Ethan, uh, thank you. Um, I'm not looking for accolades.
Right.
I'm here to do what I consider to be the right thing to do, uh, and, and this, this stuff is the public's business and, and, um, I also want to say that, well, after a number of these, is Lula, uh, board is obviously voluntary. And, uh, and certainly I, I've been to a few meetings, or I shouldn't say at least a few, from the large meetings and, uh, um, you know, they're tough to sit through sometimes and I'm hoping that we can, uh, restore what I'll call some community order. Um, the health that we is linked is all our responsibilities. And that, not just a few, um, it's all our responsibilities and it is our pocketbook as well. And those are some large numbers out there. Um, and, uh, and I'm hoping that we certainly can get this community back together, uh, in a proper fashion. Uh, and everybody feels appreciated and not discarded or disregarded. I can't, I, I mean, Ethan, I haven't had a chance to talk to you a lot, other than the very first time I came in. But, but, and it was a, we never were today, but obviously it's divided, against divided. That doesn't mean we can't be nice to each other. That doesn't mean that we can't work through a community problem. So I look forward to it. Uh, but I also thank, I do thank our current, uh, to our, and Jim's here on his own, he's volunteer. Doing, doing the best again, uh, given the current environment, obviously, it became very political. Uh, and, uh, and we don't know what's going to happen in Lion. Just for the record, I want you to know, I have not, um, had anybody reach out to me even, uh, uh, from, even the, that, the existing board in my six other ones I've been here and from the potential new board. And I do understand potential new boards don't like to talk because you're not, but don't you, I identify. Um, so I'm hoping moving forward that we will, we will be able to, uh, to have some open, honest discussion uh, about the health of our lake, um, because I think it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we're doing something. Um, I've always said I'd rather be sued for doing something than nothing, nothing I can't, uh, so, Ethan, Ethan, thank you. Uh, I appreciate your words.
Thank you.
Malina?
I think one is Paul, likewise Garrish Township resident. I'd like to thank the board for being open and, uh, and doing some consideration from the, from the residents. But I've been to numerous meetings, uh, many of them surrounding this Lula thing. And every time I come, I get more disillusioned. Uh, I sat here today before the board. Um, no disrespect, but you don't even know how your representation got appointed to the board. Don't know how many spots. Uh, Lion Township and Garrish Township are, are, were better, uh, better or worse co-makers on a, on a proposition that was sent down to, uh, try to improve the, uh, waste treatment surrounding a lake that belongs to the state of Michigan. Um, looking for us to invest millions, multi-millions of dollars in an infrastructure project. Um, co-signing, uh, for millions of dollars that this Lula board's gone and borrowed. Uh, last meeting I was at, they had no accountant, no accountant, no accountancy process. Uh, what's going to happen when this thing, uh, comes online, if it does come online? How much, uh, money is Lion and Garrish Township on the hook for? They got any process to, uh, segregate those funds out, uh, protect the people in this township and both townships? Uh, they'll wipe this township out financially. Uh, there are so, so, so many deep-seated issues inside of this thing, uh, trying to do good. Trying to sell the project to people that are trying to do good. And, um, we can't afford, uh, we can't afford the, uh, uh, the, the sell job we're getting. Um, there's too, too many, uh, too many big financial issues that stay here. Uh, I just, uh, I, I sit back and wonder, uh, how long, how's long, how long is this going to go on? Well, I'm saying the march forward, there's, there's been a clear public outcry that they wanted to stop. And, um, it, it's on, it's, it's become incumbent upon the boards to put the foot down and say, hey, look, we're, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to co-sponsor this thing any longer. If you want to, if you want to put a sewer system in, go find, buy any money, get somebody to sponsor this thing, go borrow the money. And see if the people will, uh, see if the people will raise their hand and, and, uh, and pay the debt. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wow. No one's been able to say anything, but after all of that, I got to say. I also am a mechanical engineer with a master's degree in, in mechanical engineering. So I think I come to the board somewhat qualified to understand science, understand logic. What I want to say to this board is that your number one thing should be to protect our lake. Without our lake, you're not going to have any tax base, you're not going to have anybody here. And when they get out, that we didn't care taking care of our lake as responsible individuals and quite frankly, taking care of our own poop. That's a problem. Okay? That is your job to take care of Garrish Township and to take care of our lake. Now, there's a lot of, of information out there. One of them is that we've taken out a loan. Wrong, there's been no loan. There is so much bad information out there that people are believing and running with on anger. I understand that Mr. Kniffick was here a few weeks ago and talked about all of these failed systems that had happened. All of those have been addressed by the Lula board in writing that they were individual, um, things that didn't go quite right early on in the project. You want to see a good step system, go over to Lake City, they have a step system. Tell me it doesn't work. They love it. Okay? My point here is that your charter, what you said, was for Lula to move forward. Right? You gave Lula a charter to move forward and look into the best way to provide, um, taking care of our waste. Okay? Those people have worked long and hard, maybe not as long as hard as the opposition to stop it. But they have worked long and hard with good intentions and not their pocket. Alrighty, so with that, um, they need to move forward. This, it's important that people on the board have a passion to fulfill the objective, to fulfill the fact that we're going to take care of our waste in a good way. And not just be out there dragging an anchor, trying to sabotage. I know for a fact this gentleman over here has done everything in his power to sabotage our progress. As much so as that we've even lost some of the grants that we were supposed to get next year. Very effective, very effective. He's very happy, he's very effective. But what he doesn't understand is this most recent one is going to cost every single household over a thousand dollars. From what he decided that the government shouldn't grant us, give us, no payback, give us. Okay? So why are these people are sabotaging it as Lula and many around us are working very hard to try to get the cost of this project down? And they just won't let up. And I'm extremely frustrated with the whole thing. So what I want to end with is a fact that this board told Lula, charged Lula to move forward and to try and get a sewer to take something to take care of our waste. And they have done outstanding job with engineering and yes, they don't answer questions at the meetings because there aren't the answers yet. And they come up with all this misinformation that's wrong. So I say, if you charged Lula to move forward and part of their articles and corporations are to make a recommendation to you, then you guys should take the damn recommendation and approve Mr. Coffin.
To go pay somebody free money, wouldn't it?
Ma'am? Can I get your name from the?
Elder Bloom.
Thanks, appreciate that. I didn't know your name, but I wanted to make sure that I, okay, I should have no effects intended.
No problem.
Thank you for your comments. Ethan?
I guess I'll just have to take as a moment to, uh, since, uh, I don't want to belabor this, obviously. Let's say, just simply note that the only thing that I have proponent on this entire thing is transparency, period. I did talk with Jack Bergman, I've talked with Ken Borden. I have carefully read the engineering reports, I have read the applications. All I have done is pointed out to them where in my opinion that the information was provided was misleading, incomplete. I had a long, I had a half hour conversation with Congressman Jack Bergman. Uh, and I simply explained my background, uh, and, uh, said, look, here's the issue. The issue is transparency. The issue is participation. The sewer project's been going on for way over four years. There are fundamental questions that are still not answered. It's absurd that they're not answered. I've read the reports. I'm quite qualified to be able to make engineering evaluations of it. My issue with the sewer project is not whether or not it may be effective of reducing some nutrient flow into the lake. My problem with it is a process one, period. Transparency is absolutely mandatory and it has been completely missing in this process. And that is unfortunately still not appreciated by many of the people that have been proponents of this. As a number of people that have, uh, uh, gone and talked to a lot of people, By many of the people that have been proponents of this, as a number of people that have uh, uh, gone and talked to a lot of people. Whether or not that there's a sewer now. Is, is a issue that needs to be uh addressed in a public forum, I'll be just saying, note that one of the last times that I was at a Garris board. Was in uh, uh, August of, of uh, twenty twenty-one, I think, it's getting old. And I just started getting involved. And I asked, and I said, okay, you know, this is fine, you know, big project, uh, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it as a community, we'll have engineering input, and then we'll vote. And so I asked Supervisor Ruby at the time, who said, okay, Supervisor, when they're gonna be vote? And he proudly stood up, he says, Ethan, there's no vote. That's what started what I've been doing the last three and a half years, those words, there's no vote. It's as simple as that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any board member have a comment, say, or anything we said that you wanna get out of your chest? For transparency, or anything else? No matter, no matter.
I'm personally, I'm grateful for the Glua Board, I don't care who, what kind of sys, I'm so this whole clock, I don't care what kind of sewer system this particularly. And it's really unfortunate that the D N R doesn't get more involved with this because they're the. The ones that should be doing this, but I'm grateful for any progress going forward and um. Alright, say.
Mary?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mary? Um, my only final comment, cause I'm not, is there anybody else out there wanna comment on this before I build it with my final one, like, please? Can you stand up there, Jim, and you'll be up here?
Yeah, I'm Jim Ossling, I just had a real quick question, but do you actually, and I'm sorry if I missed it earlier on when you were talking about Mr. Coffins. But do you actually have a formal request from Glua to, for the board to act on that?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there, there, there's a uh, a, a. Okay, like I said, there is a September eighth that was dated, but I didn't get to my office till well into October, but. And I'll read it for you, uh, it's reference to Garris, Garris, Lion Utility Authority, Glua Dear Board, Dear Board members, and it was from our board. Um, at the special meeting of the Glua Board. That's why we had to acknowledge it, because I just got this thing. Um, recommended James Coffin and be appointed to the Glua Board for the upcoming three-year term. This action was taken for the requirements of Article seven of the Glua Article of incorporation. Lion and Garris Township established the Garris Lion Utility Authority under provisions of Act three two thirty-three, Public Act of Michigan nineteen fifty-five. As amended to pursue the evaluation and potential destruction of sewer disposal system or systems. A preliminary engineering report had been completed in twenty twenty-two. In pursuit of moving forward on our task of evaluating determining cost-effective options, Glua has successfully secured a me, a number of grants, one point one four. Million, which we'll discuss, or excuse me, which will focus on needed background data and mapping. This information will provide data necessary in evaluating the findings of the preliminary engineering study and assistance determining the path forward. The continuity stability and sustaining of Glua is vital, as vital professing, or to provide the detailed information and cost evaluation necessary for the townships. To make the final decisions on any future project or projects. We're supportive of this, we're very appreciative, and we ask for your confirmation of our recommendation. So, I, and I asked Jim there, I, was this September eighth of this date was all it was on your letter to us and then us not getting it? Until late October here?
No, I, I'll have to go back and verify when I sent that, and I believe it was right after our meeting.
Okay.
And uh, you know.
I must have sent it as a typo.
Yourself and the, Michelle, but I'll verify.
Okay, very good, um, so that was what was given to us, Mr. Ossling, go ahead.
So, right in the very first paragraph there, they're, they're asking for. An appointment for a three-year extension, is that what I just heard, or was it for three months?
The words are be appointed to the Glua Board for the upcoming three years, uh, it does not say when that would start. However, the revision that Mr. Hall had given us in an email said. Whenever the board would pop up somebody for, or pop up somebody for a recommendation, uh, that certainly he was willing to leave. Then, obviously, um, the Lion Board must have gotten the same communication that I did. If they chose to do a special meeting, going out of office, if you will, cause I think there's a complete turnover. When I say I think, I, I don't agree with official results, not unofficials. Um, but only because I just wanna do my diligence, uh, so simply, but they, uh, they have the authority that they would have. For James Coffin and at their special meeting, then plus putting us in the position of having the documents. And um, I will say in all transparency, cause that was part of my party here closing comments. I had been lobbying for a couple months for appointing the position plus three years, meaning that. We would appoint that individual, my understanding is that Lion Township Board, I did talk to Lurie, but Lurie. After the meeting, I couldn't get with him before that meeting, I found out they were having a meeting about maybe less than a half an hour before that meeting. And I called over with Kirk Squires to find out. What they were looking to do and any discussion, wasn't able to get with them, after the meeting, he did call me. And I said, did you appoint him to fulfill the term, March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, or did you appoint for March twenty-first of twenty twenty-five, plus two years? So, I've verbally been told initially it was plus three years. These documents are, and it, it is confusing on the first one, and you picked up on it, Jim, uh, but what exactly, what they did tell me. Uh, Mr. Lurie or Supervisor Lurie told me that was just, they appointed just for the remainder of the term, which is what might be appropriate. Um, within the Articles of incorporation. Jim, does that answer your question?
Yes, I just, my point is that that document or your, your paper says that it's for asking for three years and. And it really should be appointed for the remaining term for Mr. Hall at this point, it came to me. And um, by the way, I was at the Township Board meeting in line, and they did appoint him for three months before, through the end of March. That's what their appointment of Mr. Coffin looks.
Thank you, Linda here. Good to hear, and, and Miss Gallagher, I, I, I wanted to address yours about, we should know what's in those Articles of incorporation, I couldn't. Agree on with you more, uh, I don't know how we have, where we got. Uh, one of my first things at office uh was to try and do some diligence to understand. Uh, the whole piece of everything, being the only board member that wasn't here at the time, that things kinda moved forward and got to where we got. I have looked into the, the financial picture of it, when I got here, indeed, there, 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 there didn't appear to be accounts set for Glua established, they have been established now. Uh, I also went back and did a review of the eighty-four thousand dollar Higginshead Foundation Grant, uh, which was intended to. Uh, be basically forty-two thousand, one forty-two thousand to a dollar. Uh, Jim, you're shaking your head, I don't understand.
No, 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 Jim, Bartol.
Oh, no.
Okay, very good.
I'm understanding.
Okay, very good, and so I, I did, I did that to try and understand how all that worked, I also did it, uh, I. Had asked if what accounts we were holding, uh, if any, for Garris Township, and I was told it was a reimbursement account. Looked through the reimbursement account, looked through what had been paid, and found out that Garris certainly had paid much more than Lion Township had. Uh, we dropped about twenty-three or twenty-four thousand dollars more. Uh, since then, the foundation, uh, I, I facilitated a meeting, uh, with, uh. With our consultant, Jim Anderson, Michelle Squires, myself. Help me out, um. Uh, let me, yeah, Jim, Jim was there, Jim Bartol.
Oh, sir, thank you.
Now, I was looking for the, uh.
This guy.
Punch smell, punch smell, uh, as well, and then, and the Higginshead Foundation with Vicki. Since then, the township has been reimbursed seventeen thousand and some change. There's another six thousand and some change that has been, um, or had been forwarded to the Glua Board. So regardless of what happens in all of this, one thing's a financial liability can, can occur. Uh, also, there were some things with the Glua Board, uh, I know they had some, um. Uh, I was receiving information at twenty-nine ninety-seven, these Higgins Lake Drive, for a, um, for two particular issues, one with the friends, Higgins Lake Friends for cleaning water. Um, that has since been rectified by Phil Check, uh, with getting the proper address. Um, to, whether it's his P O box or somewhere, it's just not, hey, we don't hold money for nonprofit, no problem. Um, and then there's, there was another one that detailed the swamp account, um, that somebody was trying to donate money in good faith to the Glua folks. And it was coming through as if Garris Township would need to pay you on the check, and we don't hold those funds. So that's been straightened out as well, I have to say, the Glua Board, uh, Jim Bartol, they've been very cooperative in uh getting those. What I'll call those things straightened out, so we don't have blurred lines, uh, we have clear lines. For you, uh, Mr. Coffin, uh, you know, you have concerns, obviously, I can tell you from the inside of all of this. And being completely transparent, I know that all the organizations have obviously consulted attorneys. About the current situation that's occurred with politically over Lion Township. What happens? Well, if that board pulls out over Lion Township, is it a dissolution of the corporation? Uh, we've done all of that work ahead of time, um, and obviously, as attorneys do, some attorneys will play it the wrong way, and some attorneys will play it another way. Now, up to and including this, this at-large member in a request of at-large plus three years. It knows, it indicates that if we, the correct thing for us to do is, would be upon the recommendation of Glua. The correct thing to do would be to appoint to the end of that term, March thirty-first to twenty-five, that sounds like what Lion Township indeed did through. And, um, that being said, obviously, amongst the attorneys, it. More was indicated, well, that, it doesn't say you can't do that. So, quite literally put, um. My experience, at least in the legal field, tells me those are, those are words attorneys use, uh, when, when, when they look for what you can do. To do something that maybe we shouldn't do. Um, so, that being said, I wanna assure Mr. Coffin that my last six months here, and I'm not trying to look like a Chin starter at all. I have served this numerous people that have come in. I don't have, I really don't have an audience to hunt here, um, I, I took this. This position to go to November twentieth. Uh, nobody else put in an application for this position or applied for this position. So I threw in my papers so that indeed a future board may be able to appoint somebody if you see that I'm not fit, or that might occur. So that's kinda my, my piece on all of this, I know I've told every board member this, and I will continue to be transparent. I do agree with Ms. Gallagher, and I don't think it's responsible to do nothing from my review of the. Of the, whatever study you want to look at, you could do the old college thing, throw it high, throw it low, I believe in that. We have some, some, but you know, some more battery influence that are going into our lake that probably aren't helping for our lake, absolutely. I don't know, folks, I'm hoping we can get things back together and we can uh get open, transparent, not hateful. And uh, and try and do something for Higgins Lake. That being said, we're on the cusp of a new board here, and uh, I, I, you know, they're gonna come in and they're gonna have some. Thought processes, uh, given, given hope in the audience, Jim Anderson. Uh, will be taking over from the treasurer and Jim Ossling. Um, is, uh, is Terry will be leading our board, so two fifths of our buildings are to be gone. Actually, we could have had three fifths, and so it was very hard in the last six months to operate out there and say to anybody, because simply put. If a three-fifth change happens, indeed, you have change that, that would have to be addressed. So, my thought process today is, is I, I'm, I'm just got into lame duck politics, I've said that. And I think the new board, I, you're the one to make a decision about the recommendation. As simple as it seems as well, it's within the Articles of incorporation, um, and uh, and so that's, that's my take on that issue. Any other board member having commented, or anybody in the public wanna make any more comment about this? Uh, I'm, I'm hearing from my board that they want to, at least to punt this to the next board. Is that accurate?
Yes.
I don't have Michelle Squires here today, I had that conversation with Michelle, and that would be a word with what she had indicated. That we, that we, um, we take a look at this, um, and, and do a, do a vetting as best we can, but I, I think it's almost like there's no processes, there ever. Um. I, no direction, certainly to Mr. Bartol and meeting board for Lion or Garris, what I'm hearing so far is, is that even when the initial one was put up. I, was there, Jim, was there, I know you came in late, but in the initial uh creation of Glua, was there like an advertisement put out for board positions? For the three in Garris and three in Lion, I guess I, I'm looking for that advice if this one.
I don't know, I know a lot of planning commissions, they don't advertise. Other, it's a recommendation of the. You know, the Township Supervisor and all that. And I also know that in the.
But that recommendation, Township Supervisor?
A lot of times makes the recommendation for different, you know, like G V A Planning Committee, Parks Department, Parks Board, and things like that. Uh, and as far as the Articles of incorporation on Glua, it was supposed to be staggered. At the three years, there's three members for me, and.
Eric wasn't?
Um, well, you saw the thing from Doug's mail, it said, um, all of theirs expired versus in March. Yeah, well, except. Because of, uh, Eric is gone after he leaves office.
And, alright, um, I think if everyone has had their, their opportunity there, we could move on to, um, number five, which is Parks and Recs. And go, 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 we're sort of like, I know, Susan on line, or anybody from Parks and Recs, or Mary Jo and you.
Uh, maybe, I don't see her, I don't know who that icon is. You don't know either. Um, yeah, progress is, I stopped at Carlos, Park on Carlos, and bathrooms are still under construction. As is the, the whole project and, and big on equipment and stuff, but. Um, I think, wasn't able to get ahold of Chase yet, but I'm sure he's got it under control, so other than that, that's one thing happening right now, Parks and Rec, that. Park on the lake.
Hey? Jim? Ossling?
Before Susan left, she asked if I would keep, um, an eye on the punch list, if you will, um. At the park and make sure that, uh, things were moving along as, as she had expected them to, and I was there yesterday and talked to one of Chase's. Um. Construction guys, Trevor, and they are. They are making progress, the board work was gonna be done yesterday, uh, they're having some trouble with the partitions in the bathroom, and. I believe they're a bit behind, but uh, they're confident that they're gonna be, um, making significant progress yet this week, so. And I would keep, uh, she asked that I would keep her advised, I haven't talked to her since yesterday, but I've, I've talked to her in two weeks, but. Since I had my visit there yesterday, I have not filled her in on what I, what I saw, but I will. Today.
Okay, we're, uh, before she, like, she did also maybe, and Michelle a nice timeline and about things that. Will need to do to make sure that all of our grant, uh, processes are being followed with, uh, proper, uh, with, with proper motions for the future and that type of things. She's done a wonderful job, uh, keeping us, uh, informed, uh, of all that, so. Thank you, Parks and Recs have been a very active board this year, uh, obviously, the. Maybe, they, they've done what they indicated they would do by their grants that were accepted through the state of Michigan, and so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. Uh, number six, uh, Senator after.
Well, no pun intended, but things are pretty quiet right now in the Senator. Uh, Ben just worked it well. But that, Ben would have been delivered better.
Well, quite, so, anyway, um, the, uh, irrigation has been all blown out, so that's ready for the winter. Uh, the moor is put away for the winter, and we did install the new, uh, display map in front of the chapel there, so.
Uh other than that, uh it is pretty quiet. That's all I can say.
Okay, they're good. New board members have any question? Okay, they're good, moving on. Uh number seven is the uh the pain of my existence, the township town, a water update. Um. We have been trying to get uh proper water. We had a well to open because of necessity and a new pump. Then tanks within and some of you know, ad nauseam there, we, you know, blew a blew a forty gallon residential hot water heater. That was in here, not a commercial one. Any danger, we have since done the tankless. Uh we still have a problem with a coliform. Uh they don't in the health department, they tested. And it's whether it's detected or not, it's not quantified. So I don't know whether we have a very minute problem or otherwise. There were those around the building. We have said don't drink the water, we have shut off the drinking fountains and we have ceased any hall rentals. Um type of thing until we get it. I'm having a first time we're being on Monday, where the well grower and the the state. Um um health department fellow is supposed to be here to pull the well and test it at the well. Okay, to try and isolate where we're having a problem. So we don't know yet where we're having the problem coming up with this presence of a coliform. Our employees got blessed when they've been bringing in water, uh. Water department uh with has a system down there where we can always sit down and get some water that comes in from the outside. Um and I asked them whether we should be concerned, do I need to close the hall? Uh because of this issue and they've assured me that this apparently happens a lot. In uh bigger buildings as well, schools, things like that. They have dead end spots and piping, apparently where this coliform height. Uh we have emptied this building out at least two and a half times and I know we shot coordinated it twice that I know of. Uh and so I wanted to get everybody together. They're supposed to come Monday. They didn't show up, neither one of them. Uh so we're we're back at it again, trying to get those responsible to at least have some expertise to help us with that expertise. Um probably next step is is if we, once we eliminate an outside the building, we can at least dismiss the well drilling company. Uh that it's indeed not their issue, uh then it becomes inside this building. So by process of elimination, well. And and probably building could be building specs to show where. What others have done over fifty, forty years in the piping, uh we may find out where that might hide. So. Uh just process, unfortunately, it's uh and and I know that everybody, when we say lure and everybody comes. And to meetings, but uh we we have some very old age aging infrastructure here. That uh that quite simply is going to bite our budget, uh that has been biting at nickel and dime and so serious concern for the future. So that's my first shot across the bow with this A G infrastructure anyway, for complete transparency. Board members, any questions? I've been keeping you all updated and I've been updating the employees as well. I thank them all for their patience. As we go through this. Anybody on it? We will write along to um the twenty twenty three, twenty four. There uh gets out to plot it. Uh we do have our final audit uh to get us back on on a call track. Um and uh all the board members have had a copy now for quite some time. And so at the Tuesday meeting, we will need to uh vote to accept the audit as it was presented to us by Tyler Waters, our auditor. Happy report uh out of it is despite all of the nickel and dining there that we. We look at the positive side of the ledger uh and but that doesn't mean we're we're we have a we're abundance of funds. Just means we're on the positive side, which if you'd have asked me a couple months ago, uh after first month of adjustments, I'd have a little more scare. Our new incoming treasurer and everybody is guaranteed to lose their money. Yeah, obviously, if we hadn't been, we hadn't had the interest income over the last couple of years, I think we'd be we'd be sitting in a different position. So thank you to Larry for the Michigan class and for the interest in there. So. Anybody, yeah, any board member have any questions about our audit and any reservation before we take it to an action? I don't want Tuesday.
Not here.
All my questions have been answered uh by the timer. All good. Um we did the boiler pieces. The only thing we have to do is we need to, as an action, to accept the new revised letter of intent. For Dave Hall, this stuff now, we threw the letter to email, which I'll provide the for you all in right now anyways. We will need to action item accepted to indeed see that there is an open vacancy for that at large for procedural fees. And and we don't have a question on that. We'll be accepting that new thing. Okay, and then lastly on the agenda, folks, is um. The air's types of sanitation fee proposal. We all worked on this a couple of months ago, actually. Uh we're we're being a two meeting to go. But it's it's time once again, obviously, because we have to have, there's a timing frame to get that to the county. Uh about that uh set an authentication fee assessment. Um and we've done the work, I believe, Larry, two twenty four. I think we're looking out to to cover costs for. Any sanitation pieces for G M L, the contract, the additional consideration obviously was the uh. The complex uh and take to you, geez, your way, you wanna come up?
I've got those, yeah. We did for the public, you'd like to, I mean, other than this one, uh we we haven't been immune to the uh the rising prices of. Of of things and the age again of our products, uh as you consider.
Seven dollars, minor.
Don't forget that.
But we are covering the cost.
Okay, any other comment? I mean, no other. I don't, I've looked at them, I've looked at them, you know, Matt, I'm I'm okay with it. I'm not happy about it, never doubt, but. Michelle, I talked to her about it and uh she also is okay. So we would have to move that to an action item. Uh to obviously put forth that fee and uh in a proper motion to move forward to the county. Well, good doing that Tuesday night? Uh okay, we're to the point in the board uh time and I'll I'll let that remind. And you can get it to me. Your job, you have anything else that you have for board there?
Nope, can't think of anything.
Eric, yeah, just one comment I've uh brought up at previous meetings is um. There's no name on this side of the building. There's no name on this side of the building that says what this building is.
On the other side.
Yeah, but if you come in, you can come in a parking lot, you see the fire department. But then you look here and you say, what building is this? Is it all fire or is it where it is? Just, you know, something to think about it. Uh on the front of the building, I noticed it says uh. Gary's Township Municipal Building. And Jim put a new fire sign up, looks like on the other side over there. Um and our uh electronic sign says, welcome to Gary's Township. But on that side of the building, there's nothing. I think there should be, that might just a personal, personal viewpoint, that's all. Okay, thank you. Jim?
Very, one of the things I thought about was at the um. At the entrance to the side, at the beginning of the sidewalk, at the parking lot here that comes up to the main door, the township hall. Just put a sign there that says township hall this way, park that way.
How much how much meandering do you have going into your building?
Not a lot, yeah. But if you, sometimes somebody wandering around, we can get it down here, but not a lot.
When I talk that over. Anything else, Serge? Eric? Okay, very good. Um. And they're just procedure rule. Um. And of course, when I look at procedure, I look at what's been done in the past, and when I try to find if there's any policy that indicated it was done that way for a reason. Um they're buying it um on a couple of these items. So the first is um the. Holiday hours uh for Thanksgiving and of course, winter break are being discussed in the building right now. Um it looks to me like uh Thanksgiving, the proposal would be closed on the twenty eighth and twenty ninth. And then the winter uh break, I guess, Christmas break, winter break. December twenty third to January one, returning back to the office on January two of twenty five. Apparently, I I gotta rely on your wisdom with the rest of the board. I was not here. Is that something that you normally bring as a motion and to? With respect.
Are you asking, did we do a motion last year?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe in motion was done. I mean, this is my understanding, only being here two and a half years, it was the way it's always done. So I mean, whatever motion was done or set up would have been years ago.
Okay. Was it done at the annual meeting?
I don't think there's ever a motion. I think it was just kind of posted. Yeah, in the in the manual, it just said uh holidays uh.
It does, it does state in the handbook, yeah, but it doesn't state anything with regard to any board governments for hearing it. Or motions or otherwise. Uh it, I mean, if it, I have a problem with it being operational. And of course, we post it so that the public knows, uh and the public has knowledge of when the window closings might occur. So I was just asked to bring that up today. Uh the really board member opposed to what those. What we're giving to me Thanksgiving, could you be closed twenty eighth or twenty ninth?
This year is a little different in fact, Christmas is on Wednesday, so a lot of times you're time off with a week, five business days minus Christmas. This year it's like seven days because you're closing for a week plus three days. Because the first is on a Wednesday, which makes it much longer than usual. So I guess that was my only question. Because some employees apparently have to take two days of their own pay or something to get paid because of the extra days. In the later calendar part, is that right then? So that brought up some question about should we be open Monday the twenty third? And just call on Christmas Eve the twenty fourth because you've got the Wednesday holiday? I don't know. I I wasn't around for any past experiences, calendar changes one day every year, so I don't know what the history is that.
Which two considerations, obviously, one is there's a payroll for twenty third. Which will somebody's got to come in for payroll.
And the treasurer's office has to be open a day that week too.
A day, it doesn't say when. Uh but I'll be here in the past, it was twenty sixth, so.
Yep, it'll be posted.
So yes, and so I guess I can now, it's that. You're not official, you got the Jim Anderson uh here in the audience. Uh will you care to address the date in which your office as treasurer will be open for purposes of those.
I already, I already uh indicated to uh Mary Ann, cause she's doing the Gazette, that it'll be December thirtieth, Monday.
December thirtieth it is, is everybody doing that? Or that is his assertion, he goes only with his office and just has to abide by laws that.
Stop in, have coffee, I'll be here all day.
You bring a doughnut?
I'll do it, sorry.
Okay. Um so um I it's it's up to you guys. I think it's, I I do think it's a very operational piece, but I think we owe it to the public to fill out. I also can tell you that I have questioned, obviously. Um you you can't force employees to take their own vacation or whatever to make that what it is. My understanding is, is that the employees, which would be Mary Ann and Jason, have always chose to do that. Is that correct? And and do we have them choosing again this year to do that? I have not asked the question, I'm, okay. Uh so, uh you know, the determination of that, I guess, can remain operational, but it may be December twenty third as well. That's what I'm hearing, correct? Yes?
And and uh Gazette does not Gazette or whatever. It says December twenty fourth to January first.
Right, and and the problem is, or should say problem, apparently somebody, I mean, that twenty third is a Monday, right? A Monday?
Yeah, yes.
So obviously, it's a Friday question. I get out of work on Friday on the twentieth and. I'd like to not come back for one day on Monday, is that what I?
Oh, I got you.
Like I said, it's just extra days and it doesn't happen only every few years like that. Um.
So if the employees are willing to do that, is the board been willing to? Have it close the twenty third? Who first?
Well, I'm excited to come in anyway. Yeah, but I don't have to be here all day and I don't have to open the office.
Yeah.
With veterinary and relatives.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, it's not an essential service, our essential service is. So what's what's the prevailing thought? You want to bring a motion on Tuesday, you you definitely have clarification from the employee before Tuesday, the employees. Doesn't affect my schedule, I'm not a big advocate of that.
I think we should talk with those two. They're only, they're only the two affected.
Okay.
And it requires them to take time of their own, I guess, pay three extra days. We can want to, and if I don't think that we can, I just say force it to it. If they don't want to, then we should be open the twenty third. You know, my perspective. If they say fine, no, we're good with it. Works for me.
Okay, we check in their operation, we'll see what's up on that, and then we'll make sure that the public is notified of the dates. That they all will not be here and also notified the date. That our treasurer's office will be open because that's statute order required.
That's always something.
Lastly, uh Gazette for you, obviously, you guys got given kind of a marker. Uh if there's anything else, please get it to Mary Ann.
That Gazette, and she got a multi gun, she's looking for more pillars to the back of it. Is a full, but there is room to put other information in there if you wish. This must be done by the fourteenth. Because I have to get it in K H D I and get this thing approved for printing. So you got three or four days to give us something, but if you wish.
She presumes you, um can you check when you get back over and see if there's anything from the P D side of the fence you want to get on this? I know you do your own newsletter, so is the fire department, but yeah, fire department has given us something here about past and present uh community involvement, if that helps.
She's changed the format, which gave us more space, which I think it looks very good and very nicely done by her. So we do have more room if there's something you want to say.
There is al- also, there is one other issue that she did talk to me about, which was. We do have the preliminary G F L calendar for twenty eight, twenty five. And with that preliminary, um because of the way things fall, uh we're gonna have trash pickup in the yard and whatever on. Fourth of July and on um November. And she's concerned, obviously, whether they can deliver that product um on that time. Um. A valid question. But I guess if J F L says they can handle it, um they can handle it, I guess. And I don't, not really sure how it will affect the change of that, because nothing contractually was said that I shall not do that. Uh those holiday weekends. So I'll do a double check with uh J F L's uh depot manager. Not just the dispatcher and and call his attention to that to make sure that indeed it's got under his nose or if he has any concerns. I do know that this last summer, uh they had obviously drivers, they had five drivers off at one time that we. Had a pretty um. Inconsistent performance, if you will, um but they. They were medical, it's not something they can prepare, so. Anyway, okay, uh so you've got your shot across the bow on the good that, folks. Sounds like you got a short window to get this done. Um and give them something, both are the same thing, chief. And uh Jim, if you had anything more, obviously, I'm here where it's more space available, if you will, uh on that piece too. The board has anything that you might want to.
And I, if you don't have a problem, I would be happy to have it. One statement at a time.
If interested. Have you said, I can't hear you, Jim.
Yeah, if I could, these kind of discussion today, you know, concern about transparency, if we just add, if you're interested in surveying. On the G R U A board, seventy hall patients.
on the GLUA board, sending all patients to the township because I know you'll be looking at other people and you're looking to.
And you're talking about the board physicians.
Board available, yeah.
I would like that.
Your office?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd like that. I, please don't, please don't mistake me as criticizing and.
No, I mean, you want it out there, you know, I'd be.
I think also, I, I think it's transparency, I keep hearing that word and I, you know, I can't super count on it or comment on it, cause I wasn't part of those things, but I simply am committed, this is the, everything is the public's business. Uh, and uh, we'll do our best. Uh, I look down over it, we got a new website. And uh, we're working through that too, you know, we just got a new, I just had to put a new uh block up there for agendas because agendas were hooked with minutes and Victor completely separate. So you look at it, got done, is there? Yes, ma'am. So.
Is there somewhere? I looked on the website to see projected when the meetings are scheduled out in the future.
And.
I, I couldn't find it.
Okay, um, that, I just got them to add a next and a previous button on the calendar.
Okay.
Which wasn't there, um, and uh just simply oversight. Um, and so I'm looking, you in there? Um, uh, yeah, I think we can start to populate those things, uh, going forward. I went to populate some in November and I went to double check it on the website and I can't find it. And to make sure that the backside said the same thing as the frontside and vice versa. So we're still working through it. I'm gonna tell the website as a comment, uh Shoemaker Group. Um, they are fantastic. Um, and uh, we've been in now and I'm happy to say, uh, because we, we've been able, I can forward uh something and say, hey, can you populate this for me? And they're pretty good at doing that. And so, uh, again, we're welcome. I welcome any positive constructive criticism of things that might be easier to make that operate. They seem to be very good about making changes and doing it rather quickly. So I appreciate everybody's patience with it. If we get more and more out there.